Order the September 18th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Finance Authority. We're going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge which will be led tonight by Michael Bish.
Will you just send the pledge, please?
Right here. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, that was fantastic, Michael. The city council met in closed session this evening to confer with legal counsel on one issue of litigation, existing litigation, specifically Bellingham Marina Industries versus the City of West Sacramento, and to confer with the city's real property negotiator regarding the City of West Sacramento, Central Valley, water supply contract renewal, and no actions were taken. This brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. I have some speaker cards. Anyone requesting to speak on this or any other items this evening, we ask that you take one of the yellow speaker cards which are located along the wall and please give them to our city clerk, which is Chris Rankin over at the table. In front of the clerk, there's a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes, and that's to keep it fair to everybody who wishes to address the council. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart which indicates which agenda item the council was currently considering. We accept requests to speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item, and once the staff report has been read, the council questions and public testimony have begun, we don't accept any further speaking requests on that particular agenda item. If you're addressing a specific agenda item, please turn your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety. This is not necessarily for the cases of our Girl Scout troops who come up here and do it with ease, but for a lot of us, it is something that can cause angst. So we request that there be no boos, cat calls, or even applause as we try to maintain a civil discourse here tonight in these chambers. So with that, I have a few requests to speak under item 1A, and we're going to begin with Michael Hyatt, please.
Good evening, people, good evening. I'm having problems with some neighbors, and the city doesn't want to tell me who it is. So the city has put me in an agenda now to where I file suit against you guys to come to court so I know who's doing all this, or what, because I took a toilet, getting it out, maybe we need a bigger flower pot, and I'm being told I can't do it. I'd like to know why I can't do it when it says here... The toilet is... This is what I'm looking for. Because it says in the flower pot, a pot in which you grow plants. I turned a toiletry item into a big flower pot. Now I'm being told I can't do it. I'm not putting junk out in my front yard. I thought this would be something that would be nice to do instead of throwing it in the garbage, because we're not throwing it there to fill up the landfills. I just wanted to make the flower pot out of it. Now I'm being told by the city here I can't do it after I've already done it. It don't make sense what you guys are doing. You know, I'd like somebody to tell me what's going on here because I got... I'm going to say it's three neighbors, but I can't do nothing until I take you guys to court, and then you will either reveal the people that do this, because I got the right to fix my accusers. And that's either you, or you give me the information of who's making these idiotic gestures. Because it doesn't matter what I do around my house, how little it is or how big it is, I get code for everybody out there looking over me. And I'm fed up with it. I'm tired of being harassed. I'm totally disabled, takes me time to do things, and I don't need this city breathing over my neck, because I was for this S becoming a city. Now to me, the City of West Sacramento is a communist regime.
Mr. Hyatt, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to tie it up because our paper just went off.
So, you know, it's... I don't know what you guys want to do here, but, you know, everybody we talked to loves it. We show them pictures. I got pictures here for you guys. Oh, you got the picture?
Yes, we have the photographs, thank you, sir. And I just want to remind all the speakers that we at the council are not able to respond to public comment, it's something that's not noticed to our community in advance, so I don't want anybody to take that personal for not giving direct feedback to your comments. Thank you, sir.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm being faced from the other end with So I don't know what you want to do here. So if I get fined, I'll see everybody in court.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to call Lynette Hyatt, please.
Hi. Basically the same issue. Like he said, we're both, we're basically both disabled. The neighbors, we know one of the neighbors has a camera out, so we are constantly watched, but it's like we're trying to... The toilet's out there, not to be out there, we're trying to... It's an art is what we're trying to put out there. We're not... You guys say we need to recycle, so we are recycling, basically is what we're doing. We're making it as an art issue. There are so many things out there in West Sac. I have lived here all my life, and I could take you to homes in my neighborhood that are so bad, and I have two neighbors that are really messing with us right and left. And I have a neighbor right down the street that they're not even messing with, and their home is terrible. So it's, it's pick on us, and we're getting really super tired of it, and this has really got to stop. So like he said, you guys have really need to look into this a little more. I don't think I have to, or should have to, remove that. I would like a little more clarification of it before I move it, remove it. I am told I have to remove it, and I don't think it's fair. So I would like a little more clarification from you guys or somebody, because the city has already told me I have to remove it, and otherwise, like he said, we're going to have to go stronger issues with you guys, because this is ridiculous. And we know, you know, it's, it's got to be in the neighbor. So you got to, you guys got to figure out, you know, where we're coming from. I mean, we've, both of us are disabled, and it's just, we're, we're being picked on, and it's stressing us, and I'm afraid it's going to give him another heart attack again, and then it's, then it's going to be big time issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyatt. Our next speaker is Ed Castorina.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just had a, there was a story in the news ledger about mental health issues here and a $12 million grant. The way they explained it in the paper was that it was going to, it wasn't real clear, but it sure sounded like the money was going to be split between Woodland and West Sacramento. And I just wonder how you guys are going to get the information out. I know some homeless people that are young and really need the help. It's, makes me cry to see these people, these young people out there like that in the sun, in the rain. They're just trying to survive. The police harass them, you know, I know it's their job, and, but it breaks your heart to see that. So I wish that you guys would get more information, if this is true story, and this is going to happen, get some information out there so we can relay it, put it in the paper so people know about it, and can get ahold of these people that really need, they're homeless, they're mentally ill, and they really need help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castorina.
Just as a follow-up of staff, I'm not aware of any grants that have come across, maybe it's a county grant, but if you can give clarification and provide that back to us at some other time, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Maria Ghorhava, and I represent Latino Information Network, or rather Latino Information and Resource Center. And a year ago, my attorney submitted to you a petition to the city council, a petition, and it's dated October 10th, 2018, and it's a petition to comply with the California Voting Rights Act. And so this has been ongoing for a long time. I think, it's my understanding, the city had 45 days to respond, and, and so that the cap, statutory cap would be like $30,000. Right now, it's been over, it's almost a year, so that means right now the city's cap of $30,000 is gone. And so I don't know if you guys know enough about this, but district elections is a way to get rid of Jim Crow laws, which is what at-large elections are remnants of. And so I just came to give you a quick friendly reminder that it's been almost a year that the city has not responded positively or affirmatively towards this petition, and you guys are like really, really not in compliance with the California Civil Rights Voting Rights Act, and so I wanted to just remind you of that, because it's been almost a year. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ghorhava. Dylan Horton, our next speaker. Thank you.
Good, ooh, good evening, mayor pro temp, members of the council. My name's Dylan Horton. I'm here this evening as the vice chair of the Yolo County Democratic Party, in a somewhat related issue to the one that Maria talked about. The Yolo County Democratic Party passed a resolution earlier this year urging municipalities in Yolo County who were currently using at-large election systems to elect their members to school board and to city council, urging them to transition to, to district elections. It really just as a kind of, as a tool of good government, we, in the, and I'll email the resolution to you all for the, for the record and for your consideration, but we highlighted districts' ability to obviously provide a platform for better representation for ethnic minorities in communities. It could also provide better representation for different socioeconomic levels in a community, and if a city has different characteristics, if there are different parts of the city that have different needs, districts can allow for an opportunity for a council member or a school board member to more directly address those needs, and that's the, the subject matter that we covered in the resolution. More kind of pressing to the times that we're in right now, I'm also a candidate for Davis City Council in 2020, and I don't know if you all have been following the news about the district process in Davis, but we're really kind of over a barrel in Davis. Right before, you know, getting into a regular city council election cycle, we got one of these letters urging, not so politely, the city council to transition to district elections, and we had to do it a lot more rapidly than we wanted to. I urged the city council to take its time, but kind of the, the city was, felt that it was under threat, and that it needed to do this transition in a truncated calendar. So all in a process that just started a few weeks ago, we're going to conclude in the end of October, doing the population analysis of Davis, drawing the districts, seeking public input, and deciding on these districts all to roll them out for the 2020 election. The reason I highlight all of that is, is don't let yourself get into this in an involuntary way. Take a proactive step to do this in a thoughtful, deliberative fashion with the, the input of your community. I'm urging you this as a cautionary tale of Davis. Please do this in a proactive way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. All right, our next speaker is Lauren Ayers. Mrs. Ayers.
I'm taking this message to about 5G telecommunications to all four cities in Yolo County and the Board of Supervisors. I hope you will scan through the 46 references I sent you this morning. I'm trying to make it easy for you to get informed about 5G. I provide the excerpt from each one, an excerpt from each one, and you can click on the URL to see the more details for yourself. In a democracy, minority opinions have a crucial role in good planning. Majority rules can be a form of dictatorship. When a majority is manipulated in one direction, it can be like a lynch mob, almost impossible to stop, and unfortunately, regret doesn't make up for big mistakes. We have a shiny new toy, 5G wireless. We want those driverless cars. We don't want to hear that independent scientists have found serious health problems with 5G technology, or that the, they've conned, we've been conned by the corporations who are motivated simply by profits. The FCC is a captured organization, a government agency, which is in those references. Remember some of the shiny technologies of the past, such as asbestos for fireproofing, fossil fuel for cheap energy, DDT for easy pest control. Another example is Roundup. There were early warnings from highly respected scientists that glyphosate interferes with a key biological process, but no, Monsanto's own testing showed that it was perfectly safe. Dwayne Johnson, who was dying of cancer from using Roundup at, at his job, was a plaintiff in the first successful lawsuit against Monsanto, and now, just a few months later, there are 90,000 lawsuits, 9,000, excuse me, 9,000 lawsuits in the pipeline. It took decades to get here, but the truth is out, and it will haunt us. If only we had listened to the minority who warned us all those years ago. One of the references in the pack that I sent you is a recent New York Times article supposedly debunking people like me who warn about the hazards of 5G. The reporter was once in a group that won a Pulitzer Prize, so you'd think we could trust him. But he ignores the independent scientists, the independent scientists, and never admits to a huge conflict of interest. The New York Times has a big new partnership with Verizon. The FCC has also ignored the scientific advice to slow down. Norm Alster at the Harvard Center for Ethics found that it was a captured agency. According to the Wall Street Journal, there are now over 90 cities and counties across the country suing the FCC. Lawyers aren't cheap, but there's strength in collaborating with their other local governments, and that's why I urge you to join Seattle and San Jose in that lawsuit. You were sworn into office, you vowed to uphold the California State Constitution. The first two sentences of that document state, "All people are by nature free and independent and have inalienable rights." Among these are enjoying and defending life and liberty, acquiring, possessing, and protecting property, and pursuing and obtaining safety, happiness, and privacy.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Moving on, we have Speaker Jesse Rice. Mr. Rice, thank you for being here.
Good evening, y'all, thanks for having me. It's my first time at one of your meetings, so thank you. I come in here, I have a small business in West Sacramento, and the reason I'm coming here is we're having a little issue with some changes to the parking laws. I tried to work through the parking division and didn't really seem to get much traction. There's been a lot of complaints in that area to on-street parking, mainly due to some of larger businesses in the area, Tony's Fine Foods and Amazon in particular, because their trucks or their vendor trucks blocking driveways and creating a lot of issues. And so the city, well intentioned, I think, put out a notice that they're going to not allow any on-street parking, which for our business is a big problem. We have some trucks that we use to take meals out to the fire camps, that's where our business is, and we've been forced to park on the street because anytime we park them in our dock areas or our backyard, they get vandalized, and we've lost thousands of dollars in batteries. We lost 2,500 meals last year that were supposed to go up to the car fire to feed those firefighters during that event, because the batteries got stolen, the refrigerator died, and the food spoiled overnight. So we just, we're trying to get some support here to try to find some alternatives, instead of banning outright street parking, finding some other alternatives to either, you know, limit the size of street parking over in that area, Riverside Parkway, Stillwater, Embarkadero, where my business is, or trying to see if we could possibly get some permits issued to the, so businesses where they could have parked X amount of vehicles on the street, or some other, some other issues. So just looking for some support on that. We, we've looked into alternatives to parking in our lot as opposed to on the street, and it pretty much comes down to we have to hire full-time security, which I've gotten bids on, and it's anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000 a month, which effectively would double our rent in that space, making it not viable. And, you know, we brought, we came here in 2017 from Woodland and brought our business here, and it's grown quite a bit, obviously with the amount of wildfires the last couple of years. It's been really busy. So we're just looking for some support, and I wasn't sure how this whole process went, but I thought voicing concerns here might be a good place to do that. So like I said, just to hope we could find some alternatives, maybe with the parking division, and maybe open up some more comment, because I guess they did have a comment period. I wasn't aware of it. I looked a little higher, because I've been out the fire camps for a few weeks. I came back to this notification, and when I contacted them, they said it, they had an open period at the beginning of this month, but I was out at fires, so I didn't know about it. So that's, that's kind of what we're facing. We were about to take over some more space over there on Embarkadero, some more industrial space, and we kind of put that on hold, because if this changes it, the additional costs aren't going to be worth it, so we're probably going to have to try to look for other areas, hopefully within West Sacramento, but if not, possibly outside of it, because of the added costs. So that's just what I want to bring up, and thank you all for your time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Aaron, is there, could there be staff that might connect with Mr. Rice to?
I think our parking manager, Larry Lee, is in the back, and maybe I can ask Larry to at least get contact information from the speaker.
Thank you. Heran O'Carsonia. Mr. Castañeda.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to just request that the council consider in future meeting to apply for a quiet zone or a low horn use zone to the Federal Rail Authority to reduce the amount of evening noise and early morning noise, particularly, I think the only overcrossing at grade for the trains is at Third Street. Yeah, and it's very disruptive, and I think it impedes on the quality of life living there, and I think it would be more attractive to people that are moving into West Sacramento in that area. Yeah, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Castañeda. And final speaker is Michael Bish.
Good evening. Michael Bish, Executive Director of Yolo Food Bank. I'm not easily flustered, but well done, mayor pro temp Orozco, for that, yeah, that was an ambush, a pledge of allegiance ambush. And of course, two weeks ago, I was upstaged by those wonderful Girl Scouts as well, so, Aaron, I'm not real sure what's going on here whenever I enter these chambers. I have some great news to share, and then I'm going to pick up where I left off two weeks ago regarding poverty and insecurity in Yolo County and in West Sacramento. So the great news is Friday morning, the communities of Yolo County are going to be honored by the SAC Business Journal for awarding Yolo Food, the new Yolo Food Bank facility as the Real Estate Project of the Year. So that's a huge kudos to everybody in the community that helped make this nine and a half million dollar project happen. So that's, that's wonderful news, but we cannot rest on our laurels. I mean, the magnitude of the challenges facing the communities of Yolo County are simply too great. I mentioned that there's a mountain of evidence showing that poverty is far and away the biggest challenge that this region is confronted with. It's having all kinds of impacts on us, whether increased mental health challenges, poor healthcare outcomes, poor educational outcomes, and the like. So I had mentioned that there's all kinds of studies that show a very different picture than what Barry Broome presented from the Greater Sacramento, what's it called, Economic Council, a few weeks ago. So here's a, an op-ed from Barry's Chairman of the Board, it's from Gary Mizell, and it talks about the lividity poll that was conducted earlier this year in the Greater Sacramento region, and one of the findings is that food insecurity is an issue for 20% of the residents in this region, 20%, that one out of five people, that's a huge number. It says- It says women are twice as likely as men to be food insecure. This is another study. It's called the Sacramento Region Food System Action Plan. It was conducted by Valley Vision. Its finding was almost six hundred thousand of the region's residents are struggling with food insecurity and poverty. Less than half of the need is being met due to insufficient resources. So, that means that over three hundred thousand individuals are, their needs are not being met at all by any of the food banks or any of the poverty relief services out there. So, this is all pointing to, we have a big problem. It has all kinds of consequences, and we need to redouble our efforts to do something about that. That requires leadership and a concerted years-long effort to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bisch, and congratulations again. At this point, we are finished with our request to speak under Item 1A. We are going to move into Council Communications. Are there any reports or communications? Councilmember Guerrero.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On September 6th, I attended the Governor's statewide homelessness and supportive housing advisory task force as a workgroup member of the Behavioral Health and Shelter Committee. Comments focused on the importance and need for regional approaches to addressing homelessness. Feedback from the workgroup identified evidence-based practices. Immigration of health and behavioral health will be critical. And understanding the inflow and uptake, it is important to understanding which interventions will be most successful, such as the cost of rent and evictions cannot be ignored. And the right to housing and roof will be important, but need short-term and long-term solutions to accompany rights and obligations. In addition, there is a need for robust data systems and tracking to become more efficient, which individuals are touching the system and where, and a need to use 911 as an entry point to the system. In addition, the Behavioral Health Work Group is also chaired by our Karen Larson from Yolo County Health and Human Services. She brought to the attention, to the Advisory Task Force, that there is some importance to understand street outreach, which is, Downtown Streets team is a good model for that, and engagement, the way in which mental health is framed, and strategies to build trust and rapport with homelessness individuals. And the use of the Mental Health Services Act funding. There is about 2.4 billion of Mental Health Services Act funding, and how we can best use that funding to address homelessness. And the Shelter Work Group looked at these examples and identified challenges. The unchanging or increasing number of unsheltered individuals who experience Yolo County, not exactly entirely in West Sacramento. And the long waitlist for shelters, rapid rehousing. And I've heard anecdotal stories here using Section 8 housing. And fortunately, we are addressing our permanent supportive housing need and the high percentage of exits from shelters to homelessness. And the five keys to homelessness identified are housing first, safe and appropriate diversion, immediate and low barrier access, housing-focused rapid exit services, and data to measure performance. I also attended the Regional Water Authority Board meeting on September 12th. Ms. Pam Tobin was approved as the Association of California Water Agency's Vice President. And every two years, the Association of California Water Agencies forms a nominating committee to select and propose a slate of candidates for President and Vice President. The Aqua members vote for the slate at the Aqua Fall Conference. In addition, Paul Schubert has been appointed, has appointed an ad hoc committee to address RWA's role in the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan and the voluntary agreements. The new ad hoc committee charge is to oversee the participation of RWA and its Executive Director in the ongoing, and we have a new Executive Director, by the way, in the ongoing negotiations and proceedings concerning the State Water Resources Control Board proposal to amend the W, the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan. And the ad hoc committee will make recommendations to the RWA Board and Executive Committee for defining the RWA's role and commitments of resources. In addition, on April 29th, Jim Pfeifer and Ryan O'Jackian met with Nancy Vogel, the Director of the Governor's Water Portfolio Program, along with some other regional representatives, to discuss the regional, to discuss the water resiliency portfolio initiative. Governor Newsom signed an executive order directing his administration to develop a comprehensive strategy to build a climate-resistant water system. And the order directs the Secretaries of the California Natural Resources Agency, California Environmental Protection Agency, and the California Department of Food and Agriculture to identify and assess a suite of complementary actions to ensure safe and resilient water supplies, flood protection, and healthy waterways for the state's communities, economy, and environment. Ms. Vogel requested comments, and a letter was sent by RWA and SGA in the Water Forum with recommendations on the initiative. I also participated in the Yolo Habitat Conservancy on September 16th. We took several actions related to contract amendments related to the implementation of the Yolo HCP and CCP, and approved an amendment to the Special Participating Entities Policy and discussed background of the Advisory Committee membership. And I attended on September 16th the Yolos Basin Groundwater Agency Board of Directors Meeting and received a project update on the City of Woodland's award-winning Aqua Fair Storage and Recovery Program. And we also received an update on water legislation and regulatory and delta issues. SB 1 was a key bill that was discussed with local water agencies, which they oppose, and the Governor has signaled he will veto it. And we also received an update on the groundwater sustainability plan development. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Guerrero. Councilmember Sandin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The Port Commission met on September 6th, and we discussed port operations and finances. Yolo County Housing met earlier today, and we approved several administrative items along with a discussion about the upcoming 70th anniversary of the agency, as well as strategic planning for the Housing Authority. The Homeless Plan Executive Commission also met today, and the Commission heard the County of Yolo's homeless action plan updates and draft recommendations. Particular focus was on the need to implement a systemic and coordinated effort to end homelessness countywide. It sounds like what Councilmember Guerrero heard statewide, which isn't surprising. I attended, also attended the Metro Chamber Study Mission in Indianapolis last week, and we learned about Indy's work in inclusive economic development, the sports and tourism economies, reuse of a bridge to a park, much like what we might have envisioned for the High Street Bridge, and the continuity of planning and spirit of cooperation across different leadership phases of the city. Indy also has three Fortune 500 companies located there, and these companies, as well as other companies, are incredibly supportive of the city through civic leadership and financial support. We also visited the Cultural Trail and experienced how public art can help with identity and sense of place, similar to the item on our agenda tonight about the Washington District Public Art Implementation Plan.
Thank you for your report, Councilmember Sandin. We'll move on to Item 1C. There are no appointments made under 1C Council Appointments, so we'll proceed to the Consent Agenda, which are Items 2 through 7. Are there any of the items that the council wishes to pull for further discussion? If not, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
The item was moved by Councilmember Guerrero and seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to Item Number 8, which is a public hearing in consideration of Resolution 19-91 amending the City of West Sacramento Book of Fees Related to Parking. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. Before tonight is a recommendation to conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution 1991 amending the book of fees related to parking. This update is necessary as our parking continue, I'm sorry, as our parking program continues to grow and the city has a need to control and manage its parking in order to achieve its objectives. These recommended parking rates have been established based on the current market and industry best practices and serve also as a transportation demand management strategy to reduce vehicle traffic, increase the supply, and turnover of parking and recovery costs. These rates may be occasionally adjusted to optimize parking usage. With that, I would like to return this item back to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards on this item, but since it is a public hearing, I ask that if anybody would like to speak, that they can approach the podium at this juncture. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it back to council for any further questions or comment. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion at this juncture.
Mayor Protem, I'll move the recommended action.
The motion's been made by Councilmember Ledezma. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Guerrero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries. And moving on to Item Number 9, which is consideration of Resolution 19-93 approving the supplemental operations and maintenance and five-year capital improvement program budget requests for fiscal years 2019 and 20, and 2020 to 21. I think Ms. Raper just stepped out for just a moment. I think she expected some question and comment on the other one.
Ms. Robinson, just step on up.
I'll kick it off.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
So, there is a PowerPoint that Roberta will be going through, and here she comes.
And Ms. Raper has just entered the building. You're up.
I will lead off tonight by offering some appreciation for all the work that Roberta and her team have done. She does have a very comprehensive presentation to update you on where we came from the last workshop. So, as soon as she's ready and the PowerPoint's ready, I'll turn it over. Thanks.
Excellent. Ms. Rose Raper.
Sorry, I drank a lot of water, and the meeting's going fast.
And while we're waiting, I want to acknowledge that we received a memo at the DIAIS that references Item Number 9, so I assume that, Ms. Raper, you're going to refer to that at some point during your presentation.
Oh, yes, my memo.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so you have received several revised pages from the attachments. The item was very, very large, and so there's a memo explaining what those are. I will also refer to them in here, but just to give you a brief update, we added budget for two items, which we'll talk about. And the rest are just minor changes, titles of projects and names of, that are scattered throughout the report. So, I will definitely touch on the significant changes. And I have to remember again how to do this. There. Okay. So, two meetings ago, I believe I was here and gave you a very detailed packet. Once again, we went over all of the requests, the CIP, the decision packages, the operations and maintenance requests. And so, I'm not going to do that again. The details are in your packet, but this presentation is really going to be focused on the changes from the last workshop. We received a lot of feedback from council. We went back and noodled everything, kind of through the general fund requests in our long-term model to see if things were sustainable, and so I'll go over a little bit about that. But this, this presentation's going to focus on the changes from the last workshop and the long-term model results. So, I provided this last time. We've been going through a very long process here to get everything together. One of the items, the second item on the background is the CIP reconciliation project that was completed in July. And I just want to let you know that that is, part of it was completed. We're still ongoing, making, you know, all of the adjustments, closing out projects. And so, we did as much as we could to figure out sort of what we had to work with as far as fund balances. But as we go through and look at these projects individually and close them out, we may find little things that still need to be corrected. And so, I think our, the fund balances that we're working with to make decisions today are really good. They're as good as they can probably get, although we may still find something that makes a little tweak. And if so, we'll, we'll come back to you. But we're making a lot of progress on our cleanup and getting our financial system up to date. So, today, we are here for the adoption of the supplemental operations and maintenance and the five-year CIP budget. So, what we've done since the workshop, we updated our beginning balances for fiscal year, well, our beginning balances for 1920 based on fiscal year 1819 actuals. So, we've, we have another month under our belts. We've finalized a lot of our accruals. We're actually pulling together our financial statements. Our auditors will be here next month. And so, we had some better information to work with. As you know, when I came at the last meeting that day, we had received some accruals, some fairly large accruals of tax revenues. So, we did some looking at those to figure out what was ongoing so that we could update our budget appropriately. We also revisited the Measure E budget requests. I had mentioned that there were a few requests that had not been included because they didn't go through our internal process. The Smart Cities requests for Measure E funding go through a process internally. There's a large committee made up of folks from all the departments, since Innovation and Technology Committee. And so, they have since reviewed all of the requests and made their recommendations. And the things that they recommended to move forward and be funded with Smart Cities money are in here, and we'll talk about those. We also, like I said, threw everything into the long-term model to see what that said, and we'll show you the results. And then, we also strategized on funding for projects with funding gaps. And I don't have a proposal for you tonight. We're still meeting on that internally. But I think we've got a really good strategy to start with. We met again today, and so we're going to be finalizing those recommendations and coming back to council with a workshop on those in the future. So, okay. So, summary of the changes since the workshop, and Attachment 3 gives you every change that has happened since the workshop. But just a summary of some of the more significant items. We talked about a new position request for a traffic, now it's called a traffic control and lighting technician. It really does the maintenance and work with the street lights and the traffic signals. We've got one position that works on those currently, but we need some additional support there. And so, both the new position and the existing position are proposed to move from the road fund to the general fund. Partially, the reason for that is it's really sort of a general fund activity, and we're limited on funding in the road fund, and we've got a lot of road maintenance needs. And so, this was a way to make sure that we could fund those positions ongoing and free up some funds in the road fund for some of the other maintenance and capital needs. We also received feedback from council. Some of the projects that were somewhat road-related that were proposed under Measure E have been moved to the road fund. I know that the Measure E road maintenance category is really strictly for road maintenance, and these were sort of ancillary-related, but traffic signal medians and those types of things. So, we moved those to the road fund. I changed the contribution to the general facilities fund. If you recall, I was proposing to move $2 million a year from the general fund to the general facilities fund. We've actually front-loaded that with a one-time contribution of $4 million in the first year. And then, the second year started with an annual contribution of $1 million so that we can fund our facility maintenance and replacement needs. And then, some of the facilities projects that were previously proposed to be funded out of the general fund are now moved and are going to be funded out of the facilities fund. These next two bullets are the things that we have added that you'll see on your, on your memo there. We've added some funding for the West Capitol Avenue Road Rehabilitation Project, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail when I get to those funds. And then, we added $200,000 for the Fire Station 45 repair project. There's a little bit more information in your memo, but what we found was we had about $150,000 budgeted for roof repair replacement that, in doing some more research, found that there's a, that that would have lasted about five years before we had to replace it. And so, for $200,000 more, we can actually get, replace the whole roof, and it'll last another 20 years. So, we thought it was a very good investment. We moved the equipment purchases. There were two purchases from the general fund for replacement equipment that we moved to the Equipment Replacement Fund. We added the Measure E Smart Cities requests, and then, we've updated for revenues, sales tax and cannabis primarily in the general fund. And then, there are some other minor adjustments that, of course, are all detailed also in Exhibit E to your resolution. So, you might recognize this PowerPoint and this format. I'm doing what I did last time, where I'm using the same PowerPoint and then highlighting what's changed, just to make it easy. And so, for the general fund, the blue items are things that are added. If you see something that is red and strike through, those are things that were taken out. And I will let you know, we moved things around, but I didn't take anything out. So, if you see something that struck through in one page, you'll see it added in another. So, for the general fund, we determined about a million and a half, 1.4 million in year one and 1.7 million in year two, is the ongoing portion of the additional sales tax revenues that we received last few weeks ago. Excuse me, the payments that we received were much larger than that, but there was a big portion that was for prior year, sort of a one-time payment for prior year as the CDTFA implemented their new system and caught up with allocating those revenues to the various jurisdictions. And then, oh, part of, so part of that also, about $100,000 is the cannabis portion, where we're seeing higher than expected cannabis revenues. The other change that we added today, animal control services contract. We received last week or early this week our updated cost allocation for animal services. It was about almost $90,000 over what we had included in the budget, and so we've added that in. And then, I also did some work to add into each of the funds, or at least the general fund, the impact from the 104 budget request. And Fund 104 is our general support services fund. It's the fund where city manager, finance, HR, sort of the city administration overhead expenses are kept, and then, we use that to allocate through our cost allocation methodology to all of the other funds. And so, I've included the impact on the general fund for the ongoing requests here in the one-time or in the one-time section. requests here in the one-time or in the one-time section. I talked about the contribution to the facilities reserve and then the traffic control and lighting positions, I also discussed where we're moving those from road fund to the general fund. The other new item, electronic patient care reporting, this is one of the new items that was added to Measure E Smart Cities funding, but what we've done in the past is, for the first year, sort of a pilot, we will fund these things out of Smart Cities money, and then we want to move them to the fund that they should be funded from, so this is the second year, it's an annual subscription cost, and the second year is here in the general fund. And this, there's more information if you'd like to get into that, but there's a whole decision package for any of the new Measure E requests. Attachment four provides a summary, and then also the decision package with all of the details on those. So just let me know if there's anything you want me to go over. The independent oversight for police, I don't mean to freak out when you see the next slide that has its strike through, it's not, it's just I moved that portion to ongoing, since it's essentially about $50,000 a year for that. So at the bottom, the total ongoing request for the general fund that were presented at the workshop were just about a million a year, since we've added the sales tax revenues and made the changes that we've made. The first year, it has about 500,000 in ongoing costs, and the second year, a little over a million, 1.3, and it shows the difference there. And I'm going to run through each fund unless somebody stops me along the way, so feel free to jump in. So once we added in, based on the proposed ongoing request for the general fund, this gives you just a snapshot of what the long-term model shows. What you see here, the, it's dark blue, but it looks black, line is the projected revenues on a most likely forecast. I've done two scenarios here for you today, one is most likely, which is what we expect based on our, it's sort of a conservative estimate, but based on our trends, we looked at a 19-year, a five-year, and a 10-year trend, and we tried to be conservative and take the lowest of the three and sometimes even lower, but also look at things that we think might impact those revenues and expenses going forward as well. So, the dark line is where we would expect our revenues to be with a most likely forecast, and the green bars are where we would expect our expenditures to be with the most likely forecast. So you'll see that the revenues exceed expenditures in all years over the 10-year model, and I've gone back a few years too, just to show you some of the history. The red dotted line is a pessimistic scenario for our revenues, and what we did for the pessimistic scenario is really look at no growth for the next nine years, if everything stayed exactly where it is today. It's not very realistic, really, if we're going to see a recession or a downturn or something like that, you might see a couple of years of declines, followed by some growth beyond that, and I'm still working on a good recessionary scenario to, and a strategy on how we might deal with that, that we'll be talking with council about at a future meeting, but the only history I have right now is the Great Recession, which I think is a little unreasonable, so we're working through some of those projections. But this shows if we, our revenues were exactly as they are today, with a little decline to take care of the one-time sales tax revenues we received in 1819, that's where our revenues would be. It shows that if we maintain our expenditures with the projections that we would show over a 10 years, that we would be very much on the whole. But if we started to see that we didn't have growth or less growth than our revenues or even decline in our revenues, there are certain things that we can do in the short term, and I've made some assumptions that we might do those, meaning, you know, holding positions vacant instead of filling, you know, through attrition, being very careful either cutting or maintaining our operations and maintenance budget if things increase, finding cuts we can make elsewhere to make those work, and so these are really sort of short-term, just basic things that we could do that would reduce our expenditure line, and that's the peachy color. So what that shows is if we saw a decline in our revenues or flattening of our revenues, we would make some minor changes internally, and it would keep us afloat for a few years until we start seeing some deficits, right? Now, if that were to happen, we'd make other decisions, right? We'd come to council, we'd figure out what we need to do there, but this is just a, what might we do if we started to see our income not going up like we'd expect? So, yeah.
Yeah, I think, take a breath. May, may, Madam, Mayor Potem? May I ask? Thank you. So, thank you for explaining the peach color, because I was, in looking at the staff report coming in, what assumptions were you making, and so you answered that for me in terms of some very, your assumptions are based on some very top-level stoppage of spending that might occur, and I think that, and, but on the green lines, this is growing at what percentage, like, you know, do you have a sense of, I know we just passed some recent contracts with our employees throughout all the labor agreements, but I'm just trying to understand, what were you projecting that growth rate at?
So I typically try to be conservative, and on the expenditure side, that means overestimating what we might spend. So, the salaries and wages going forward, I put in about a 4% increase per year on the most likely scenario. Our historical trends are about 3% over the last 10 years, 3.5% per year over the last five years, and I know we had about 9.4% in 1920 and 3.3% in 2021 based on adopted MOUs. So I've left those increases in, because I know we've got adopted MOUs, and those are things that we're going to need to do, and then I did a zero beyond that for the pessimistic scenario.
Okay.
So, and overall, what we were looking at, total expenditures, about a 4% per year average increase, and over the past 10 years, it's been 3% per year, and over the past five years, it's been about 4.4, so that our most likely was around 4% per year.
And in the, in the model you have here, is this also looking at any impacts from just other costs we incur, namely, sort of around the impacts we've been seeing from our calipers and OPEB and payments?
Yes, so I have my assumptions, I've got them broken down by category, major category, and so for pension, on the most likely scenario, I went with like a 10% increase per year, slightly less if we were going to hold some positions vacant, knowing that we'd have, but that's, that's a kind of a fixed, you don't get a say, you have to pay it. So yes, I've come up with some different scenarios for different categories.
And on the revenue side, I'm sorry, on the revenue side, you're also, you said you kind of kept it at a status quo, which was this year, minus any one-time, I don't think, you said, any one-time revenue increases we saw, is that a true statement, just, I just want to make sure, okay?
For the pessimistic, yes, I've left 1920, sort of as it is, although it looks like on a pessimistic, I've even reduced some of those, assuming that we might see some flattening starting this year, which probably isn't very likely. So, and in the second year of the budget, I, the most likely is what we've budgeted, and the pessimistic is assuming that we don't have an increase over 1920.
I have a related question, so the most likely expenditures also just basically hold everything as-is with just...
With the exception of the things we have no control over.
No new programs, no additions, it's just growth kind of as-is, with salaries, expenses, and other?
Yeah, I think I've held most everything at 0% for the pessimistic scenario, with the exception of, like I said, the first two years, the adopted MOU increases that I know we'll need to do. The PERS, I left, PERS and OPEB expenses and other benefits, I've left with slight increases, knowing that those are things that we probably need to pay. Everything else, would assume a flat, that if there were increases somewhere, we'd have to make up for them somewhere else, with the exception of transfers out. I did assume that transfers out would remain the same. In a lot of cases, the transfers out fund or subsidize other funds, where if we had a recession, we might expect that, that we might need to continue to transfer out to cover some of those.
But the most likely one basically means where what we're setting today is, in this, just in this model, it's, that's what we have. So whatever we're approving today's budget, this bud, this projection just covers as-is. It's not new, what I'm saying is not, not new additions, et cetera?
I didn't add any positions or any specific programs, but I did include in the most likely, some percentage increases based on what we've seen historically, which in some cases does include some new programs, but I didn't look at anything specific.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just helpful, just in terms of the reality check on, on things. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, what does that look like? So, what this looks like, this is a chart of our reserves, it's got the general fund balance, the general reserve, which the council has set a policy to maintain between 15% and 20%, and we've covered around 17% of our annual revenues, and then the budget stabilization reserve. So, I've tried to color code, it's hard to see here, but the blue bars is the general fund balance, most likely, so every year, if we get a surplus and that builds up into a balance, that's the money that you get to make decisions to fund one-time things. That's, those are the blue bars, and you can see those increasing if there's a most likely scenario. If there is a pessimistic scenario, the blue line shows you where the general fund balance would be. No, the general fund balance is the blue bar, the general fund balance pessimistic is, are the orange bars. So all the things blue, I tried to maintain the most likely forecast, the peach or orange are the pessimistic forecast. So, general fund balance, most likely, blue bars, that continues to increase. The general reserve, most likely, is the dark line, you would also see that increase, okay, because that is every year that we, our revenues increase, we are in, making an incremental contribution to the general reserve to maintain it at 17% of our annual revenues, okay? Does this thing have a, I don't even know how to use that, okay. And then the green, the green shading at the bottom, that is our budget stabilization reserve. That is shown to grow over the next 10 years in the most likely forecast as well, that's where our waste hauler franchise fees revenues go, they are used to fund our stormwater maintenance program, and there's about a half a million dollars a year in excess there, so we would expect to see that to continue to grow in a most likely scenario. If we had a pessimistic scenario, the general fund balance are the orange bars, the peachy bars, and you can see where that goes down over the years, okay? That's, that's our use, once we start having a deficit around 23, 24, you can see the use of general fund balance to balance the budget, if we didn't make other decisions to make cuts or respond elsewhere. The orange line is the general reserve, and you'll see that that flattens. If our revenues are held steady, then we don't increase our contributions to the reserve, and that is held steady until about 26, 27, when we would start dipping into that reserve if we make no other changes. And then the general fund stabilization reserve on a pessimistic forecast, which shows that we'd still have about 7.6 million dollars in that reserve if everything were to go south and we took a long time to respond to that, okay? Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, come on. Okay. So, that's on the ongoing. On one-time requests for the general fund, you see the changes here, I mentioned the independent oversight, that 50,000 did not go away, I just moved that to ongoing from one-time. The bucket truck and the sports field mower replacement are the two items that I moved to the equipment replacement reserve, and the blue items are the things that were added. I've already talked about the one-time contribution to the facility reserve in year one, the impact of the requests in the general support fund, and then the community relations drone that was previously requested under Measure E has been moved to one-time general fund. And so this shows you the difference between today's scenario and what I presented at the workshop. Overall, it's actually a reduction in requests, about $500,000 over the two years for the one-time general fund, although it's a, it's a $1.5 million increase in year one.
Roberta?
Yes.
Can you explain to me why it is that we made the decision to do the $4 million contribution to the facilities reserve upfront like that? What are the benefits?
Well, the benefits are, it's a couple of different things, what, you know, we've moved things around, I did have a lot of the facility request projects funded out of the one-time general fund, it would be nice to keep all of those into the facilities fund, so that if you wanted to run a history and you see all the things we do, we can see them in one place, and so instead of funding them here, I've moved the money to the facilities fund to go ahead and fund them there. And then it starts the million-dollar annual contribution in year two, which I wanted to model in my long-term model, and it was easier to do that if I had it in there, and so that, no real great reason, but... Okay, so the CIP changes for the general fund, the City Hall reconfiguration project, again, was moved to the facilities fund. The turf-to-water conservation planting, planting project was moved from the facilities fund to the general fund, because it's not, it doesn't really strike me as a facilities project. And then the West Capitol Avenue Road Rehab Project, we've added a request for almost 1.7 million of general fund money. Now, you will recall, this is one of those projects that was on the list of projects with funding gaps. We also have another project, the Plug-In Partnership, where we have a $2.665 million federal grant to carry out that project. The problem with that, and SECOC knew this when they went and did this program, is that you can't do a project like that if it's federally funded. We'd have to know all of the sites that we're going to use, do NEPA on all of the sites, it really makes the project impossible to do. And so, SECOC has proposed that we swap that federal funding from that project to another project that already has federal funding, but where we have sufficient local funds identified for that project, so we can move forward the plug-and-play, or Plug-In Partnership project with local funds, get that done, and then not federalize a project that's not already federalized, because there's just a lot more hoops to jump through if you have federal funding on a project. So, the West Capitol Avenue project already has several federal grants on it, but it also had a funding gap. I've proposed $1 million in Measure E, which is two years for the two-year budget, the $500,000 a year for road rehab, I propose to use that all in year one, along with 1.665 million of general fund, so I could put local funds on this project and we can swap it with the others and move both of them forward. Questions on that? Okay. So, with those changes, we've got the total requests from the workshop were about 1.9 million in the first year, 300,000 in the second year, total requests now 2.6 million in the first year, 320 in the second year, the difference is about 766,000 dollars over the two years. So by, I've moved in 1.7 million for the West Capitol Avenue project, but I've moved out a little bit more than that, so the net is about 765. So, what does that look like in our long-term model? Oh, well, here, the general fund proposals budget, if you wanted to see it all in one place, it gives you our updated beginning balance, the adopted revenues, along with the revenue adjustments that we're proposing, the adopted expenses, along with the ongoing requests, and then it shows our net surplus, 1.2 million dollars in the first year, 1.8 in the second year, and then we've got our one-time requests, the CIP, the general facilities contribution, and a general reserve contribution, leaving us with about 5.6 million dollars at the end of the second year. So the general reserve contribution, that's a big number in the first year, 2.3 million. You can certainly weigh in on this, what this is, when we adopted the budget in June, we rolled in three other funds that typically get some support from the general fund at the end of the year, the planning division, the engineering division, and hazardous materials. All three of those, if they have deficits at the end of the year, get funded by general fund, and it's very hard to figure out where your general fund is going to be if you're not taking into account those other funds or those other divisions, which are typically funded by general fund. So we moved all those in, and the revenues that come with them, we moved them into the general fund, which has increased our annual revenues for the general fund. So the 2.3 million there is the amount needed to keep us at 17% of the general fund revenues. We can certainly do less, but I've left that in, partially because if we're talking about a potential recession or what we do, throwing a little bit more money into reserves is not necessarily a bad thing, and the revenues that we've moved in are typically general fund revenues and are subject to the same ups and downs, and so it makes a lot of sense to maintain that reserve. Of course, you get to tell me what you want me to do with that. So now, you want to see the model?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I've got a couple of different charts here, I've just showed the reserve balances. Again, the most likely still looks good, it's exactly the same as it was, with the exception of, we would be using a few million extra in the first year, in the two years. So if there was a pessimistic scenario, the thing to pay attention to is the yellow line, the budget stabilization reserve. You can see, once we use the other reserves, again, if we made no other changes and we had no growth for 10 years, which is not likely, we would dip into the budget stabilization reserve in year 10, and we would still be left with about 5.2 million dollars in that reserve. So, two other ways to show it, because I know that chart can get a little bit hard to see, in a most likely forecast, the gray is our general fund balance, the blue is our general reserve, the green is our budget stabilization reserve, they go up, we have a lot of money at the end of 10 years, and again, that's not funding, you know, utilizing, it's just showing that we're accumulating. And... Come on. Oh, my God. There. The pessimistic forecast shows that at the end, we'd use the two, the general reserve and the general fund balance, and we'd still have $5.2 million, looks like a little bit more, in the budget stabilization reserve. That's a little bit easier visual. Okay. So that's it for the general fund. Before I move on, didn't you have any more questions or discussion on that?
Um...
Councilmember Ledesma?
I'll wait till you get done. I'm making notes as I go, let me come back to it after I finish it.
Just a quick question on some of those other budget packages that were brought forward that are not, you know, here. And something that I had suggested was additional police officers, because I know that they're stretched pretty thin. And the impact is, you know, they have to make, you know, significant decisions, life or death, you know, type of situations are before them. And, you know, that's an area that I'd like to see addressed, but it's not before us, because, you know, that was, you know, the management team had taken a look at prioritizing. But in looking at ways to provide, you know, to get it funded, and, you know, that's something that I'd like to see, an approach to moving forward with that.
Sure. That's also something that we're working on. You also made a comment about a signing bonus. All of these things we're working on, but they take a little bit more strategizing to come up with how we would do that and how it would be implemented. So we're definitely working on that. It's just not in the proposal tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This budget does include an additional $500,000 for a sergeant and lieutenant, as well as another staff member, correct?
It does. There are three positions in the police department, a training lieutenant, an admin analyst, and a police sergeant for patrol. Okay. So moving on to the general support services fund, I'll go quicker after this. Two items here, the new position, the grants and communications. This is not new, however, I had inadvertently included it 100% in Measure E last time. It's supposed to be split 50-50 between Measure E and the general support services fund, so here's the 50%. And then, I don't have a note here, but that is something in the report that we've said for the two years, we have it funded that way, and then we'll revisit funding for going forward. The other item is fleet telematics. Again, this is a new Measure E request that is an annual cost. The first year, we proposed to fund out of Measure E. The decision package is there with all of the details. And then the second year, we proposed to move it into the fleet maintenance cost center in the general support fund. So, and that's about $13,680. I'm not showing in any balance here, because at the end of the year, all of the costs net any revenues that were received in this fund are allocated out based on our cost allocation methodology. And so I showed the impact in the general fund, minor impacts to the other funds. The general fund usually takes the biggest hit, and this fund ends with the zero balance at the end of the year. Community investment fund, also known as Measure G. There is one change here, and it's a positive change. It's a negative here under one-time requests, and what that means is it's a negative expense or a revenue. As we were looking at our strategy for funding the projects with funding gaps, one of the things that came up is the potential of a no-interest loan for a few years. And so I was looking at how we might repay that loan without necessarily hitting the general fund. Our general long-term debt fund had a large reserve. I've been looking at that, because I know we put park impact fee funds there as a reserve to pay the rec center lease. With the recent change to have Measure K fund that, I wanted to release that funding and put it back into the park impact fee fund. I also found that we had about $1.9 million in that fund that was reserved for future parking projects. And so I'm proposing to move that to the parking fund. By doing that, it would actually free up the money that the Measure G fund was using to subsidize the parking fund. A year or two ago, when the council approved the parking manager position, that position was intended to come on and to really beef up the parking program and to make that fund self-supporting. In the meantime, the council approved a loan for Measure G to cover any deficit in the fund. So, the $16,000 in the first year and $419,000 in the second year were the amounts that we're going to transfer to Measure G to make that fund whole. If we move the $1.9 million of parking money into that fund, we no longer need these transfers, and we're able to free this up for other projects that would typically be funded by Measure G. So that is the only change here. And what that leaves us at the end of year two is about $377,000 in that fund. And that's after, this doesn't show the CIP, but that's after a big, it's a $3.5 million contribution in year two for the Ice Street Bridge project. Measure E, you'll see here, the program manager for grants and communications was cut in half. It's green, just showing it was there before, but the number has changed. The community relations drone, we moved to general fund, as I mentioned. And then the three items in blue are the things that were proposed to be funded by Measure E smart cities funds by the Innovation and Technology Committee. It is the, I'm going to, Leica 360 scene scanner, and this is a request for police, the electronic patient care reporting for fire, and the fleet telematics. And if you, the details are again in the package, but if you have questions on those, I'm sure we've got representatives who can give you more information.
I do.
Yeah.
A couple of things. On the fleet telematics, on that request, and were there...I get the concept of being able to measure. Who's answering for this? Is it you for a moment?
It might be me. I'm...
I'm just trying to understand kind of the outcomes of that we're hoping for in terms of in our ability to implement whatever findings we do get from efficiency, mileage, everything it's tracking on the public works car, where we've seen evidence of its use at other municipalities with great effectiveness.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Brotem and counsel. Tim Spinelli, I'm the Equipment and Facility Superintendent in Public Works Operations and Maintenance. We're really one of the only local agencies that doesn't have any telematics on our equipment without any data to make decisions. It makes things very difficult. One of the benefits of the fleet telematics is that we now have the ability to reduce idling on all of our vehicles, so we're saving on gas. It helps with driver behavior, reduces liability, because when staff know that they're being watched, they behave better, but we don't try and use this as a disciplinary tool. So, and we can also look at utilization rates on our vehicles. That way, if there's certain vehicles that are not being used, we can remove them from the fleet and put in equipment that will be used in a much more efficient manner.
Okay. So, I mean, my only ask is that on some of these, it'd be helpful by memo, whatever else, to see what actually you do learn?
Mm-hmm.
And what we did get out of the investment, we won't know until you get a year or 18 months into it, right?
Yeah, we are looking at having some performance metrics to measure against, so that we can see what our return is like.
Okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
And just following up on that, I think we can incorporate some of that into the annual reports on the tax measures going forward.
Thank you.
And follow up on that.
And before you leave Measure E, I just did want to thank you for including the provision on splitting the position you mentioned earlier for the two-year review of that. So, appreciate that.
That was what was intended when it was submitted to me, and I failed to do that, so thank you for catching up.
Roberta, under fleet telematics, is the, under Measure E, is that the road? Did you say it was the road portion of Measure E, or what?
These are the smart cities portion of Measure E.
Okay, that's fair. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, I've given a little bit, oh, so Measure E CIP, we'll do that, and then I've got a summary on Measure E. The red-strike-through projects, these are the items that I moved from Measure E to the road fund. And then you see the West Capitol Avenue Road Rehab added in. These were the items that were initially either requested under smart cities or road, but didn't really match either of those categories closely, so we moved them to the road fund, which is a much better funding source. So, the summary on Measure E shows that we are still, we've got the adopted budget, the supplemental requests, we're still within the target funding for most of those items. The West Tech home run is one where I know the council had previously allowed us to carry over some of the unused budget from prior years as we ramp up that project or that function. And then the road rehabilitation projects, as I've said, I'm requesting the full $500,000 from both years in the first year. But at the end of the second year, we are poised to have about $5.4 million in balance in the Measure E fund.
Councilmember Burrow.
Thank you. Regarding reducing community impacts of homelessness, if initiative, given that the state budget has just released, you know, funding, and we can possibly draw down additional funding, could we increase that amount there in the future?
That's council's prerogative, I believe.
I'm sorry, for homelessness?
Yes.
I don't know that there's any funding that's directly for local government. There's, the state budget has a lot of money for counties, but in terms of how it impacts our operations for the Measure refund and homeless programs, until we know for sure that there's a direct connection there, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't want to make that.
But it's a possibility.
It's something we'll always explore.
Sure, okay.
More funding for it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this only, I'm sorry, this only reflects the actual tax dollars coming in and, right, our sales tax dollars from Measure E. So it doesn't count in any state funds that might be...
No, it doesn't. I get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. So moving on to the road fund, we've talked about these, but it's the existing position and the new position request for, related to traffic control and lighting, that we've proposed to move to the general fund. I am surprised I don't have there. I have it, standing balance for road fund. Here are the four projects that we've moved in after those adjustments. We actually end up with a balance at the end of the second year of about $400,000, which is fabulous, given where we were with this fund a year ago and all of the needs that we have. Am I going backwards now? Okay. General equipment replacement, I've moved the two items to replace equipment in here, the total one-time request, $200,000. This fund, I know it shows a much lower number in your packet, there's actually about $9.5 million in this fund. I'm doing some evaluation on it, because what we've done in the past is maintained this to cash flow, general fund expenditures, essentially, between the times that we get our large property tax payments. About half of our general fund comes from property tax, and we get those payments a couple of times a year. And so July through December, or really, you know, April through December, we're using money, and then we get a property tax payment, and then again, for the next few months, we have higher spending than we have in revenues. So, we have typically maintained a reserve here, knowing what our cash flow needs are for the general fund during that period between property tax receipts, but I'm evaluating this to understand how much of that is actually needed to be maintained for cash flows or could be available for other equipment needs. But for now, the $200,000, I think we looked at, we've got about $1.7 at this point that we think is available to spend, and so we're proposing to use $200,000 of it for these equipment replacements. The general facilities fund shows the transfers in and a couple of changes. The two projects that were moved in here from the general fund are the, oh, the City Hall reconfiguration and then the Station 45 facility repairs. That one was previously proposed to be funded out of a general rehab and replacement reserve. We've moved it here, because we've got sufficient funding and it's appropriate here. And we increased the amount by $200,000 for the upgraded roof, as I mentioned. Showing that at the end of year two, we'll have about $3.2 million, and that's when we should also have our master plan for facilities, vehicles, and equipment, maintenance and replacement. So we end up with some seed money to start doing some of those, the things that come out of that study. The stormwater maintenance fund, I mentioned this briefly.
Just a minute. Councilmember Burrow?
Yes. One quick, going back to the slide before this. On the Bright Park ADA upgrades, you have $200,000 listed, and is, is there what, so that is just to draw down matching funds? Is that the plan for that?
This is actually, we have historically had a transfer from the general fund to the general facilities fund of $200,000 a year toward ADA-type projects. We have a project that is just general ADA work that comes up, but we also know that we've got this requirement to do the ADA upgrades for the Bright Park, and it's another one of our unfunded projects. Not entirely clear yet on the total cost of the project, and we still have about $1 million sitting aside for other ADA things that come up for the next two years. And so rather than just putting that $200,000 into the general pot, I wanted to start setting it aside to build up funding for the Bright Park requirements.
Okay, sounds good. And so, it's 2023 is what I read, when the ADA, we need to fulfill that requirement?
I've got, it might be '23. '23 or '25 is in my head.
'23 or '25?
I think it's '25. '25.
'25?
Yes.
Okay, so we have some time to work on that?
Yes.
Okay, good.
The idea, as Roberta said, is to start putting aside money, knowing that that's out there, just so when the time comes to do the project, we're not scrambling for funding.
Okay. All right, that's great. Thank you.
So, stormwater maintenance fund, with the item that came forward a meeting or two ago for the public works reorganization, I had mentioned, I believe in there, that we moved one position that was previously in the stormwater maintenance fund, but was really more environmental services with the split, and environmental services moving to community development. We needed to move the position that is supervised by community development out of this fund and into the new environmental services fund. But the position is still doing work related to stormwater maintenance and should be funded from this fund. So I've added the transfer out from this fund to fund that position. Clear?
Yes.
Okay. Parking improvement fund, this, we talked about this earlier, but I'm showing the transfer in from the general long-term debt fund of $1.9 million in the first year, reversing the transfers in from Measure G, and leaving this fund with a balance of almost $1.4 million at the end of the second year. And then, huh, here we are. So, new position requests, I also provided this slide. You can see just the change in the proposed funding for a couple of the new positions that we've already talked about. And then the projects with funding gaps, I think we've talked about this quite a bit as well, but we are still collaborating on a strategy, and we'll bring that back to council, but I think we've got some good ideas on how to move all of those forward. So, we are at the point that we've got a recommended action for the council to adopt the resolution approving the supplemental O and M and five-year budget requests. Along with that, there is a revised authorized position list, including the 14 new positions, a revised salary schedule, as two of those positions are brand-new. And then there's classifications and job descriptions for the purchasing manager and traffic control and lighting technician that are also attached that we're asking for your approval. So I'm happy to go over anything else that you might have questions on.
Are there any questions or additional? Councilmember Ledesma?
Thank you. So, Roberta, once again, you're kind of all over this, and thank you for the hard work of you and all the team in pulling this together since the last time we saw this. Lots of work to address the questions we had and feedback we had the first time around, and thank you for being, all for being responsive and finding the proper place. I do have some questions and then some general feedback. First of all, on the amendments you sent tonight, I just want to clarify, I think these are both Measure E-related, but just looking at the three and four, where can, we are, I'm hoping you can maybe explain a little bit around these, just so I'm clear. So, it's saying that we updated to reflect the projects as were trail connector and not park improvement. So are they actually, I just want to make sure they're actually are trail-related, or are they, are they two components of a park improvement that was, what was the actual?
I'm sure Tracy can give more detail, but during the original round, at least one of these projects had both park and trail improvements in it. We scaled it down so that it is just the trail portion that is requested from Measure E. I failed to update the title of one of the projects, which didn't make it clear that it was trail connector, so I've updated the title and then made sure that the project type matched that as bike, pet, and trail project.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then on item two, I know it's already in your thought around animal control. I think that's always in our, how, the long-term strategy is still something that we will, I know the city manager's now squirming about this topic, but just seeing this raise again and a $90,000 increase.
Right. This has been a disturbing trend with the county contract, and there is a county-wide effort, I think you all are aware of, of the future of animal services. We are exploring different options. We are exploring different options. I anticipate bringing a workshop back to council at some point to give you some details on those options once we have a little more information, but we're continuing to work with the, the partners with Yellow County on both the short-term cost issues, but also the long-term plans. And also beginning to look at other options, including working with Sacramento, so.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and I just think about it in terms of all the other boards, and we sit on and ask for an allocation. I said at least one that has a similar sort of situation, but what we need to all kind of have a mindful, mindfulness, we make decisions there, the impact is here. So, so thank you, I just want to make sure that was, I just called that out. Also, I do have a question on the, just a brief note, Robert, on the reconciliation, you brought that up at the very beginning, and I don't want it to go, I think, I know you're going through all the steps to kind of tie all that up, and at some point, when you're done, just to kind of, I would be interested at least seeing sort of what the, kind of, a final report on that was. And going, I think I said at the beginning is, what are the controls or whatever in place going forward to make sure, as new projects open up and the management, I know you were putting in management systems and whatever, I just want to get a final sort of at least update. When you're ready, I'm not going to put a time on it, but just, so I know that you're, not only do we clean up in the past, but we're managing it, the controls in the future.
Absolutely, we've got a team, actually at the department head level, that we're working through the life cycle of a project, the collaboration, the coordination, and so that, along with the sort of accounting and procedures that we're putting in place, I think will be good solutions, but we'll definitely bring an update.
All right, and then, I'm sorry, I got a few more questions, I'm sorry, remember Tim. The, the general facilities, the one-time funding to the general facilities from the, I think it's $4 million from the general fund, and I understand, based on the budget, maybe you said it in, in that big presentation you just gave, I'm trying to understand, so we just had, we have the dollars available in the general fund, that without it, it would just be sitting there maybe towards a reserve. I'm trying to figure out what, what are we not funding?
Sure, the opportunity cost. Well, I can tell you that historically, what we have done, during the two-year budget cycle, after the first year, if there's any surplus, we bring it back and we do a midterm adjustment, and after the second year, if there's any surplus, what we've done historically is automatically transfer that to the general facilities fund. We didn't do that last time, because I didn't have council direction, and I didn't want to do that without council direction, and so that's essentially, I think we had about a three and a half million dollar surplus, it's money that would have been there anyway. But this is why we're coming up with a strategy, and one of the things that I think I mentioned is a fiscal policy, including some reserve policies that council will adopt as to how we fund these reserves going forward, so that is money that would have been in that fund anyway.
Yeah, but, but your instinct is right on having a policy guidance for, that we can buy off on, so we know, we can put some boundaries on whether the policy decisions are not, or how you're moving those monies, right?
And it'll be easy to do that, or easier to do that, once we've got the master plan kind of showing our needs, so that we can come up with a really, an educated strategy on what we need to fund and how.
Yeah, okay, I get it, thank you for clarifying that. And if I may, just a couple more, just comments. And so for those viewing at home, who just got a litany of budget requests and actions, and all the staff that's been working for weeks, months on this, kind of all the times I needed to have the little visor on, my little calculator, trying to keep up with you, and it's welcome here, I think, at least for me, is being able to understand, because public finance, this is complex, and it's, monies are slated to be used for certain things, and monies aren't coming in like for the road fund like they once, they once did, and at some point in our time, but it's important that we have this exercise, that people understand that the details that we, you have to go through to fund a, you know, a $5,000 whatever, you know, drone in this case, which I think some of us still question, but, okay, but I think it's, it's important for the public to know that this level of detail is important for us to, once in a while, once a year, twice, whatever, on update, is to be able to see it so that we understand clearly the expenses, we're saying how you're moving the organization forward and their needs, right? And this is, so this was a very important exercise, and I appreciate the level of detail here. It seems like we're really in the weeds, but occasionally we need to be, right? And these are important moves, and you're being very strategic with them, I appreciate that. I also want to talk about the modeling, which, you know, everybody, I think, like, sometimes you're in the moment, and you think about the surpluses we're dealing with for the first time, and since I've been on council, I think, and how you have that, but it's important to take the long view as well, and your modeling is just your best estimate of what, what might happen. And I think it's important for at least me and the public to understand that, to kind of step back from all that in the weeds about how we're spending, and what, how's this actually going to affect us, and we asked about that the last time, and you came through with that, and it really gave me a view around some of the things we said the last time. Is, and I fully support these actions today, and the 14 FTEs that will be able to move our organization forward and be able to address some services that we all, all of you identified are priorities, and again, I 100% approve those in every project that's in here, because the city is, is demanding, but it's always good to be able to see, look out, like, what does this really mean if something happens, since the, and knowing, well, we're all, the R-word is being used a lot more in, in, in planning and financial planning, and I think it's important that we understand that we kind of keep that visor on as well, that, because having, came in at the time when, when we were dealing with recession, you didn't have a whole lot of luxury about what you can and can't do, so I appreciate that view of it, so that we can see the impacts and the needs for policies around our reserves, and how we, how, if we continue one or two years of continued sales tax revenue growth and property tax revenue growth, that we understand that that's going to last maybe two or three years, and understand that, that government, local governments like ours that depend on that, we're usually one or two years behind, lagging behind an economy, so we'll start feeling if a recession were happening now, and spending, we want to feel that for another year or two. So having that occasional look at that and starting to plan for that time, which is, always comes, is super important. It wasn't part of our agenda, in terms, this is a budget package, then we're going to move, make some moves, but context, it's, it's a good reminder that this is a snapshot today, here's a possible scenario in the forward, and to be able to guide us in, in sort of understanding what to look for the next time around. And so I just want to thank you for all that good, good work, because it does allow us that time to really take stock of where we are financially and manage it appropriately, so just want to say thank you, and to all the staff, thank you for all your work on this, it really is meaningful work, and it's a lot of work for you and your team and everybody else here to get that here, but it's, it's welcome by me, so thank you.
Thank you. I have to tell you, the last recession, you're right, look, government typically lags a little bit, knew it was coming, knew it was coming, but kept seeing, you know, increases in revenues until just one quarter, everything went away, and so it's really important to be prepared to be able to handle that when that happens.
We have a request to speak on this item, so if there are any of the questions of the council, this junkie can take them now, but if it's comment, I'd like to reserve that for after the public comment, is that a problem? Okay. Pat Flint?
Hi.
Hi.
I'd like to thank Roberta again, this makes it very easy to follow as a layperson. I have a couple of questions. The supplemental operations and maintenance budget, what is the plug-in partnership program? And you don't want to use federal funding for that because the National Environmental Policy Act? I don't understand why you're not using the federal funding there, is it because you're trying to circumvent the NEPA Act? So, that's just a question. And then road funds, you're going to wind up with $400,000. It's not enough to cover all those potholes out there, so maybe we could look in another area to move some money into that fund, because, you know, that's the number one priority of the community. Our cars are getting tired of going over those potholes. Measure E, road funds that have been designated out of Measure, Measure V funds maybe, let's see, no Measure E for road funds, are they going to be transferred to the road, road fund from the Measure E? A certain percentage that you're setting aside in Measure E for road funds, are they going to be transferred to the road fund budget to cover potholes, or maintenance or whatever, not signals, we want our roads repaired? Then, number 109, Measure V funds, there are two expenses there for the streetcar, one of them is the transit signal priority and traffic management, $10 million. The other one is the streetcar design phase, $10,150,000. Is that in addition to the $40 million that's sitting in an inactive budget? Sacramento, you know, is opting out of the streetcar? Are we planning to continue to move forward with the streetcar at our own expense, and will, will it go into Sacramento? Or are we planning to use those funds on some other type of mode of transportation that I have not seen come to the council yet? So those are kind of the budget questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flint. Okay, I'm going to turn it back to the council for additional questions or comments.
Just wanted to see, did you want to answer the questions, Roberta?
Sure, I can do that. So, sorry, do we just?
Actually, if you had a question, Councilmember Gero, to ask of Roberta.
Oh, I do, I do have a question as well, in addition to those questions that were just asked. I do have a question regarding the economic development study. There is a reference to about 299,000, can you give a little more, and then it goes up to 369, can you give a little more background?
Can you give me specifics, is this a project?
Page 33.
Of?
Of this entire thing.
This page here, just want to know a little more background on what this is. It's pretty general. I'm sorry, the, they are page numbered by attachment, are you looking?
It's, hmm.
Is this a CIP project?
Yes, it's a CIP.
Washington specific plan update?
Washington neighborhood is no kidding, yeah, I think that's, yes, Washington specific plan update, that's correct.
Yeah, so that's just, that's funding to complete the Washington specific plan update, so it's not a study, it's actually funding to complete the, the specific plan.
Oh, I see, okay, okay, that's good, thank you.
And then the other questions? So I can look at the project page to give some more details on the plug-in partnership, but this is one thing, we were at SECOG last week, the grant came through, SECOG, it was one of their new initiatives, and the person we were talking with last week had said, hey, when this, when this thing was thought up of giving, giving federal money for these types of projects, even said, dude, those projects are never going to be able to go forward because of all of the requirements, and they knew they were going to need to swap funding for other projects that, that had local funds. The issue with this, and let me see if I can, I don't know the project number, but the, the issue with this is installing vehicle charging stations in several different areas, we need to have all of those areas identified, specific locations, and do an environmental study on each of those locations for this, which would just make it impossible to do, is at least my understanding, if somebody's got more information, they can jump in, but SECOG knew when they provided the funding that they were going to need to swap it with local funds to make these things happen.
And I see Ms. Strand approaching the day.
Yay!
Thank you, the podium, thank you, Ms. Strand.
Thanks for the, the intro, Roberta. Yeah, so the plug-in partnership, it was awarded $2.665 million in the very first round of the Green Region Grant Program created by SECOG this past year. The purpose of that program is really about early implementation towards achieving the greenhouse gas reduction goals set forth by the state as part of the Sustainable Community Strategy. So what the plug-in partnership is, is about really getting on the ground and getting EV charging installed in West Sacramento, a combination of public-facing, but also starting to work more closely with the freight, kind of those medium-duty, last-mile logistics, distribution types of companies that we have so many of in West Sacramento, and the other co-benefits associated with that, of course, our cleaner air, and, you know, multitude of ricochet effects from climate change. So as Roberta was saying, when SECOG awarded this, they did sit down with us, and they recommended that it would be a lot more cost and time efficient if we were to do this funding swap, rather than have to do what would be a very onerous environmental review for each and every site, which has yet to be determined through the, the planning of that project.
That's good to know, thank you very much for that background, sure.
The second comment on road fund balance of 400,000 and all of the maintenance needs, I think a year ago, we were here with a, with a very large negative balance, and so we have been moving things around to the extent that we can within general and unrestricted funds to be able to get this fund into balance and actually have a balance in there and a surplus each year, which we have for the next two-year budget. This is not the only funding that we have for road maintenance needs. We also have SB1, which is in a separate fund, and we've got the amounts from the Measure K and Measure E set asides. What happens with those, the 500,000 a year for, for Measure E, I'm proposing to use that over the next two years for the West Capitol Avenue Road Rehab Project. Those funds would transfer from Measure E into the CIP fund into this project to be used, and going forward, any other, any other needs would probably happen the same way. We typically would create a project for it, transfer the funding in, and then complete those repairs. So very aware of all of the maintenance needs and the potholes, we are doing our best to try and find where we've got sufficient funding and free up funding in the road fund to the extent that we can, so that we can respond to those needs.
Can I, may I ask a follow-up on this issue, and, and it's not, maybe an ask, so as you move all this, West Cap is, the, West Capitol Avenue is obviously the priority to get them, get those funds, right? That's, that's the plan you've laid out, is get those, so, to West Cap for that project. What, what I would ask staff to look at is sort of what are other priorities that are out there? We had this discussion a year, year and a half ago, and, and what other priorities are coming up, small or large, that, and I know we've had this conversation on how to get to that priority, but I know sometimes, are there things, small things we can do to get closer to shovel-ready, so that when the funds do come in, we can go to fix that street or, or fill those potholes? I know there has to be, that was the lesson we learned with Measure E a couple of years ago when it was implemented, is that we had to take some time, do some engineering work, and get, get plans in place. So I, I don't know if that's a possibility or not, I think, just something I want to put in staff's ear, and I think maybe think about is, this, this fund goes back into a positive, and maybe there's other one-time monies or additional funds that we can use to pay for funding of that, that, that might just, might be a fraction of it, but just to get it in place, so that when larger funds do come in, and we do have a new, another surplus or another opportunity, we kind of have something we can go to right away.
Sure, I know the, the now Capital Projects and Transportation Department is working on the pavement management system, prioritizing a lot of those things, so that as we have money, we can respond and utilize it appropriately, and they did exactly what you just said. There are probably three or four projects that are proposed in here that are to get the design, get everything done, so they are shovel-ready for the next funding round, so that if we're able to get money, we can get it and move forward. So I know that is something that they're, they're working to implement. The other comment on Measure E road funds, again, to be used for, for potholes and things and not signals, I think the mayor made it very clear last time I was here, that the road category of Measure E is strictly for road maintenance projects, and so we're definitely, that is one of the reasons we move some things around to other funds that are more appropriate and to maintain those funds for road maintenance specifically. For Measure E, the streetcar project, I'm sure somebody else can provide more information, these are not new adds, so they're not asks, they're not in addition to the 35 million, they are the pieces of the project, the design, the things that were already underway, and in fact, a lot of those, those funds, some of those funds have already been spent. We maintained those in here, we eliminated the construction project portion, because that hadn't started, and we're unclear on necessarily where this is going, but we maintained the, the design projects until we know what's going on, because we have spent money on those, and I'm sure somebody has more information.
I can, or you can, Erin?
I did, sure, go ahead.
So, as a member of the Streetcar Policy Committee meeting at JPA, so, yeah, the streetcar, as I think everyone's aware, in December, January, we opened up bids, when we actually went out to bid for the project, which came out. we actually went out to bid for the project, which came out about $75 million more than we had planned. And because the funding wasn't solely from West Sacramento, it was also from Sacramento, from property tax, property owners in Sacramento, various sources, including federal government and state cap and trade funds. A myriad of very good sources were there. Both cities agreed to like, go back to the drawing board at staff level and see what more we can maybe leverage, continue leveraging those funds for the streetcar as it's proposed. Could it be built? Could we go forward with another form of rail, another connecting point between Sacramento, West Sacramento, to achieve some goals? So staff is still working on those proposals as we speak. I know the city manager just met with the Sacramento city side, and I think we'll be coming back to council, and I don't know when, but coming back to council if any further funding plan was needed around this or policy around the next generation of what that project may be. But the reality is, is that there was a huge investment coming from the federal government, huge investment coming from the state of California, that the goals are still the same, is to be able to have a connecting point that's low emission, that provides mass transit, reliable mass transit across the bridge. And I think we're all committed to that, just trying to find, we could figure in the rubric to find the right combination of funding and solution. So I'm not sure if you have anything to add to that.
Just that, as you said, partners have been meeting actively today, meeting with City of Sacramento and RT. I'd anticipate an update to the council coming back as early as next month, but definitely, it's on the horizon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandin?
I just want to thank you for the responsiveness from our last meeting. You clearly heard all of our input and requests. And I think the scenario, planning for the different potential financial outlook for us, is really helpful. I mean, it's sobering, but it also, it gets us to think about the possibilities, both positive, and then how, over the long term, we may have to consider how to act and how to move forward. I also do want to thank you and Ms. Robertson, and the department heads, and city manager, and all folks for rolling up their sleeves. This was a really big lift to actually, I think, look differently and look kind of accurately. I don't know how to exactly phrase this, but just to right-size everything for us so that we can actually have great history and great references, and that things comport with one another. So I realize what a big project this was, and I really want to thank you and the team for doing that work, because I think it'll serve us, the city, well in years to come. This isn't just, we're dealing with this moment, you know, in this moment, we're dealing with this budget, but this actually will serve the city well in the future. And I think the hard work that went into this, I just want to share the gratitude that I have for you and the team.
Thank you. I think everybody's really going to be happy when this is over. It's been a huge lift for everybody.
Councilmember Gero?
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And I also want to echo, seeing kumbaya up here with everybody, on the tremendous work that you all have accomplished in providing what we need is a guiding, you know, tool for us to be able to make the right decisions. And you've done a majority of the work and made it, you know, pretty easy for us. And, you know, and also looking into where we can move forward in the future, making sure that we provide, I think what's important is the infrastructure needs of the city, and also significant projects that will help enhance our city economically, so that we are, you know, moving forward as an attractive and thriving community, not only for, you know, certain parts of the city, but, you know, citywide. And just applaud your effort and appreciate everything you've done. I know you guys all worked really hard at this. The details are pretty significant, and we did spend some time reading it. So, just thank you once again.
Thank you. Takes a village. We have a fabulous village here, so.
Well, I know when you first came on board, that was one of the first things you said, that your goal was to make this budget document something that was user-friendly to people in the public, so that they can participate in this process. And I think what you presented to this council, you and your team, is exactly what you envisioned. And I am, the council members have already said all that needs to be said. This is an amazing piece of work, and we really do appreciate everything that you've put into ensuring that this document came before us in this fashion. If there are no other further comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
And this would be a motion that would include the memo meeting agenda amendments that were provided to us at the dais. I have a motion by Councilmember Sandin and a second by Councilmember Gero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with the amendments.
Yay!
Thank you. And with that, we are going to move on to item number 10, Workshop on Part Two of the Washington District Public Art Implementation Plan. Katie Yancey.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam and councilmembers. We'll end everything on a light note tonight. How does that sound after that really?
We just gave a round of applause on a budget item.
Go, Roberta! So, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about Part Two of the Washington Art Implementation Plan. As you recall, the last council meeting, through all the priority sites and sort of the justification for this art program and the grants, I thought I'd bring it home and talk about the longer-term projects, as well as sort of what are the next steps as we go through the standards and policies and selection options that we have brought forward with the document. So as a reminder, we have 17 sites that we're looking at doing art installations in the Washington District. All of them are tied to this idea that public art in Washington is part of the infrastructure. So it's like a sidewalk, it's like a pipe, and it's all really gearing people towards revisiting and experiencing that riverfront regardless of where they are in the district. So when we talked about our priority sites, a lot of them were at these key destination points, and this is sort of that juicy center that we're going to be talking about with these remaining long-term projects. So a lot of them are permanent installations. We'll talk a little bit about where we might have opportunities for rotating or temporary installations, how these are connected to these priority project sites, how they're connected to those green pathways that you see on the diagram, which are the Garden Street, which will be talked a lot more about in the Washington Specific Plan Update, what those are designed to do, how they're meant to navigate people through the district and orient them to the riverfront. And then I also wanted to mention too, that we'll talk a little bit about opportunities for local artists to navigate through these additional long-term projects. When we've been doing these presentations, for example, we just went to the Chamber of Commerce, their government group. What came out of that was a great discussion about, well, why are you doing these temporary installations, or why are you doing these rotating installations? And we really got a chance to tell everybody at the commission, like, it's very difficult for emerging artists or local artists who don't have a strong portfolio to have the five or six potential engineering consultants and permitting consultants and NIPA and SEQUIT consultants that they need to navigate these very large installations that are on the riverfront. And so some of these longer-term projects are also the city's opportunity to reach out to these emerging and local artists and say, these are low thresholds in terms of the engineering, civil engineering, structural engineering that you need, and we'll get your name out there while you develop that portfolio of consultants to support that work. So first example of our temporary or permanent or lower priority or longer-term projects are these wayfinding aspects on E, C, and Tower Bridge Gateway. And these are temporary installations or smaller permanent installations that would sort of happen periodically throughout these blocks, going back as far as Seventh Street, and then occurring all the way up to the river. And it's just guiding people through that experience. So they might experience two or three art pieces as they're walking down that. So think of the poem concept that's on E Street being replicated multiple times in different mediums, some permanent and some temporary. And you can see some examples here, you know, those wrapped utility boxes or these singular sculptures. We also have recommended that we would be painting the underpass of West Capitol Avenue. We just went through a great project where we retrofitted that into a cycle track. We think this is a great opportunity for one of those lower-threshold projects to occur. It's already there, somebody just has to clean it and paint it. And so this would be a great opportunity for a local artist as well. This would be a temporary installation, but more like interim temporary, because this underpass does go away when we do the Seventh Street connection following rail relocation. The B Street Tower, so recently we acquired this tower from the county, and about 15 years ago, the redevelopment agency, when it was going through its branding exercise for the Riverwalk, put some art on that. We own that art, so this is an opportunity to look at re-envisioning what that structure could be, especially as we're doing the North Riverwalk extension. This has the potential to become a wayfinding icon for that trail, and also for the Broadridge Boat Ramp as we continue to do projects there. The Washington Specific Plan talks about doing a park extension at this location, so this would be a great opportunity to connect all of those projects together. We're also hoping to add a lighting element. When we were doing Washington, realized, we heard a lot from the public, that there's just not enough light in these areas. And so this would be an illumination opportunity as well for that trail.
Katie, does that, there's no danger of that going away, though, as a result of any of the bridge?
Nope, that is staying in place.
Fantastic.
The, but this would be one that maybe would go away. So the I Street Bridge Replacement Project, it requires a widening at C. This is right at the corner of C and Third. So we're recommending that we look through the process, structural engineer, look through the process of relocating this. We talked about perhaps relocating it somewhere else along C Street, so it could, again, act as one of those wayfinding components. Because it's an existing art piece, we want to be really sensitive to the fact that the public picked this location, and we're heavily involved in selecting the art piece on top of it. So we want to make sure that we're trying to get it as close to this original location as possible, since it ties very closely with the firehouse. That's why, in part, why it's brick, to tie to that firehouse structure. There are several small walls along the intersection of Tower Bridge Gateway and Grand Street. And there's a large wall that is the plinth structure for the new West Gateway Place Project. We wanted to do some tile installations along those and tie them all together and have it sort of be a Grand Gateway, which is the name of that little area that we have there, for the district. This is also a low-threshold project that an emerging artist or a local artist could participate in, and I think it's a great way to sort of welcome people that are coming off of the freeway into West Sacramento. And then we also have another park that we've planned, so in, there we are. So this is a new park. I mentioned that that undercrossing goes away when we reconnect Seventh Street and extend that grid back down to Tower Bridge Gateway. So we have a park that's a little, it's a little more than one and a half times the size of Garden Park that exists in the Bridge District. And we would like to have a large art piece that's also a play structure there, so that people can use that space and really engage with that art piece. The intention is that it would connect with the priority site that we talked about at the last meeting, the Grand Gateway Plaza, and it would be a continuous experience where someone would see that plaza, walk along that cycle track, experience that park, continue to walk along that cycle track, get back on Tower Bridge Gateway, and then experience the rest of those pieces. So someone could have a nice walk and experience four or five art pieces from the civic center to the riverfront. And then this is one of our other pieces that connects to those priority sites. At the last meeting, we talked about that linear path that will go just south of the Ziggurat Building, in between the Ziggurat Building and that new project that's coming online, the residential and hotel project. We wanted to put a small art piece at Third Street that would connect to the larger art piece that's on the riverfront, so someone could experience those two pieces together, and it would beckon them to come and experience the entire walkway, and let them know, this is a public space, and you're welcome here, and please come experience these art pieces. One of the Measure E items that you just approved was an improvement to the restroom that is on the Riverwalk. And we would thought that this is a great opportunity, again, for a low-threshold project for a local or emerging artist to wrap this structure. We could do it, we could do it in a temporary wrap, so we could have new, you know, new icon graphs there, or we could do something more permanent like tile, or even a mural at this location. So we thought this is a great thing. This will also tie to the sculpture that's proposed at E Street, along with that park that's proposed in Washington, just south of the existing I Street Bridge and that deck conversion park that's proposed there. Oops, I'm going the wrong way. Pardon me. What happened there? And then our last long-term project, sort of to cap off that discussion that I talked to you about, starting with Grand Gateway and moving towards the riverfront, all those different pieces, this would be sort of the last piece that you would experience on Tower Bridge Gateway, right before you got to the Tower Bridge. And it's another gateway monument that we hope would be somewhere really adjacent to the right-of-way, maybe in a median that would allow people to sort of experience it, whether they're in a vehicle or in a car located right at Tower Bridge Gateway. So that sort of is the conclusion of the long-term projects. What I wanted to share with you next is, we brought this document forward to the Arts Commission back in June, and we asked them to sort of conceptually approve all of the content. At that meeting, we got a lot of feedback. We got a lot of feedback about what we were getting right, and what maybe we needed to address. We got a great opportunity to work with planning staff and talk about how this document's going to be incorporated into the Washington Specific Plan. And so what we've come to realize is that what we need to be incorporating into this Washington District Art Implementation Plan are the options, or the pathway, sort of like an action plan, for the various different actions that need to be taken post-approval of this document to enact it. So I wanted to walk you through what some of those things would be. So first, how the art collection is going to be developed. We have two choices, or a hybrid in between, frankly. One, we can continue to do what we've always done, which is an art piece, we decide we're going to go after an art piece, we put together a selection panel, they make a recommendation to the Art Commission, and then someone who's on staff is sort of responsible for guiding through that project. We have 16 art pieces. No one here at the city is an art professional, and so that would fall upon the various different staff people who are managing those projects to curate the collection. In contrast, our consultant recommended that we create a standing art selection committee that then would take on that responsibility of sort of curating the collection, and then would make recommendations to the Arts Commission. In either scenario, which would entirely be up to the elected and appointed bodies to decide which path that they want to take, the decisions remain the same. The recommendations are made to the Art Commission, the council approves the budget, approves the contract for the selection of the artist. This is just really an issue that gets to, who's responsible for the curatorial vision? And who has to carry that institutional knowledge? Is it the standing committee? Or is it a staff person right now who doesn't exist in the city? Or do we want to sort of test one theory out and maybe move to another? So we're bringing these options forward as part of the plan and saying, we're not making a recommendation. What we're saying is that we need to look at this in terms of the entire citywide art program, and make the best decision for Washington, and make the best decision for the city, and take resources into consideration. So we stepped back from making a recommendation and said, there's clearly some issues that we need to work out and understand better, including like, who are the participants on this standing committee? So we told the Arts Commission, based on the feedback that we received, that we'd step back from our recommendation, carry both options forward, and bring a final recommendation through the inaction process. Excuse me. So for the near-term priority projects, though, these, the four that we discussed at the last meeting, we're saying that we should just continue with the existing process. We will just continue to use the selection panel on a case-by-case basis, and someone from staff will manage those projects. And this will be a good opportunity for us to vet the aesthetic criteria and the standards that are in the document in terms of like, what does it do for the character of the district? How is it addressing historic preservation? What is it doing to the built environment? So we said, it's best to just focus on vetting the criteria, instead of getting into vetting the options with the near-term priority projects. So that is where we are, and we'll be bringing that information back as we vet each of those four priority sites to the Arts Commission. We did want to address in this plan that there are various solicitation methods that you can use for artwork, and sort of the pros and cons of that solicitation process. We're not recommending at this point that any of these be enacted. We still need to work with our finance department and potentially our new grants person on what are some of the limitations of going after grant funds? Are we precluded from using some of these selection processes? Are we precluded from using them because they're just not compliant with our own solicitation procedures? So we're carrying them forward because this is really responsive to what the artist community is expecting in terms of having flexibility for solicitation. So, for example, like direct selection. It's rarely used, but it can be done for very specific art pieces, where you're like, that's the art piece that I want, or the developers, like, that's the art piece that I want. So we want to make sure that we carry that as an option forward, although we're not enacting it with this document. We're just acknowledging that it's something we'll need to explore further. Resources. So this isn't a funding plan, this is just identifying what it's going to take to really implement these 16 pieces. It's about $2.4 to $3 million. And traditionally, we have funded this through either grants, or there's facilities and parks set aside. Whenever the city builds something, it sets aside 1%. What we're What we're recommending in this document, given the enormous amount of infrastructure work that needs to be done in Washington, and because we've identified that public art is part of the infrastructure in Washington, that we also create a 1% set aside for all of those public infrastructure projects as well for public art. So that's a new recommendation that's included in there for funding. But most importantly, as I was saying earlier, this does recommend that we need additional staff committed to implementing this plan. And so the plan itself identifies for just these 16 pieces that we will need a part-time staff person who is, has expertise in managing, arts consultants or curating art pieces, regardless of what option that we select for the artist selection committee. And this brings me to my final slide. So tonight, we're looking for your comments on how we are proposing to move forward with these longer-term projects and these policy recommendations. We will be bringing the item back in its new format, so we are going also through the process of reformatting the document so it works with the Washington specific plan update. We're reformatting it, so you'll see it in a new, you'll see it in sort of a new format when you see it. And the, some of the content will be streamlined so it fits better into the Washington specific plan, but everything will be there. We're hoping for that you'll approve it on the 16th so that we can deliver it to the NEA to finalize the grant. And then you see there's three posts of approval, so there's a lot of work to be done after we get the, the document approved. We need to discuss those amendments with the citywide art policies and with our finance department and make sure that we can enact the various recommendations or suggestions that are within the document. We also need to integrate them into the Washington specific plan and take advantage of the sequo streamlining that would be afforded us by bringing it into Washington specific plan. And then we also need to work through issues like staffing and the financing and all of those other issues, and most importantly, maintenance, and figuring out how we're going to maintain these pieces. And so this is just the first step in sort of laying out what is the envelope that we're looking at, what are the goals, what are the objectives that we have, and what are the outcomes that we're hoping for this art program to have in Washington. But we will be back several more times getting into the nuts and bolts and how we'll actually bring this to fruition. So that's my presentation. Thank you so much for your patience after the budget item, and I'm available for any questions.
We actually have a request to speak before we get to that. Are there any questions of Katie Yancey at this juncture? Okay. Let's go ahead and take our request to speak. That's from Dani Langford. Evening.
First, I just want to say Katie and Tracy and her staff are doing a fantastic job, and I really appreciate, because Tracy's so good about answering questions that I sometimes have. I'm not opposed to art. I think it's great. I do a lot of road trips with my husband to go visit our son that lives in the Arizona area because I can't fly because of health issues. And I'm always impressed, and I tell my husband and my son, I wished we had like on the underpasses, the artwork like what they have, and I hate Phoenix, but they have some really fantastic artworks, like stamped concrete with a little bit of mosaic, not too much, so it's not too expensive. That's what I'd love to see. And I think we're headed in the right direction, but I really hope that we honor the history. We don't just go all modern. I'm sorry, the shimmering beehives, the boot that's called the barn, and the West sign don't, don't work for me. And I know art is in the eye of the beholder, but I think we need to honor the character. I look at Burgers and Brew. They've done a great job keeping the character of that area. And that monument, I think is great that we're going to try to move. The B Street Tower, I do have concerns on the lighting because I do travel so much by car. I've gone into San Antonio, for instance, last year, and some of their artwork, the lighting was so offensive to my eyes, I had to literally pull over and have my husband drive because it was that bright. So I think we need to watch those things. And I know we're still in the planning stages. I wasn't here for the first presentation because I was out of town. I do like that we're looking to hire local artists. I think another theme with those other three pieces I mentioned, you know, in Europe and back east is where the artists came from. We need to utilize, we have some amazing artists in West Sac, Sacramento region, and even California. Please do not go outside of that area. What else? And that's about it. Just please honor the history. And, and I know the history and the new can come together in a beautiful way. We just can't piecemeal it. We have to make it come together. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that they want outside help because she's right. We can't rely on staff that they're not, they're not the art gurus. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford. Turning it back to council for any questions, comments, or feedback. Councilmember Guerrero.
Katie, thank you for the great report. It's very helpful and, and just answers a lot of questions already that I had. But I have one quick question. What kind of part-time person would be able to fill the job? I mean, that's, you know, just somebody with the right background and somebody with the expertise, but what is it that you're looking for?
So I, I'm going to just express that this is not my area. I mean, infrastructure is my area of expertise and planning is, so I'm just going to first say public art is not my thing, which is, I think part of the reason why I was given this is because it's so ingrained in the DNA. But my guess is that we're looking for that person who, who one, understands the, the character of and the culture of West Sacramento. Two, speaks a language that I don't speak. Speaks the language of aesthetics, speaks the language of materials, speaks the language of telling a story. And so I think what you're looking for when we're talking about someone who would be either the part-time staff person or who would be maybe facilitating the standing committee is someone who has a proven track record of working in the artist community, who has a reputation in the artist community as knowing what they're talking about. And that could be an artist, that could be an architect. It could be a variety of people who have a design aesthetic and who understand the practical issues of project implementation. So I think you could do a consultant, you could do, you could do an artist and have them be, one of the, you could have them be the consultant. Of course, they wouldn't be able to go after the art because they would be the ones that would be doing the scope of work and doing the solicitation. But I think you're talking about, we have enormous number of professors at UC Davis who teach art. We could absolutely go out to one of them and say, we want to partner with you, help us develop this collection. We have Sac State as another example where we could go to. So I think there's a lot of resources that we just need to figure out what is the right, what is the right niche of people to, to, to go out and get. And I know through partners with like Crocker Art Museum, we can find, we can find the right people to help us with this endeavor who speak the right language and have the right lens to do this.
That's very good. Thank you.
Councilmember LaDesma.
Thank you, and Katie, thank you for another great job bringing this back the second time. And I'm going to say, I think you being so entrenched in infrastructure work is absolutely the right person for the job you just did. Because I think we really want to be able to look at art as part of the, the fabric of the neighborhood. That's the whole point, right? And that's why you're there. And two, you have, you're very much geared towards implementing and not like some conceptual plan that somehow waves some magic fairy dust and it'll appear one day. This is a legitimate plan to get it done, so, so thank you for that. Your staffing recommendation, I want to kind of echo, I, I don't know what that looks like either. And I think it is one that is a city we need to start thinking about, and, and you kind of get to it in the plan, because it's not just about curating, and it may not be one person or how, how we go about it, we just need to think about. But it won't be just about curating the process of these specific projects and curating the artwork that goes in. But we, you, you contemplate here on sort of the West Sacramento, Sacramento collaboration that's going on. There's a lot of energy in artwork now, and I think at the regional level. How do we, as a city, get, get more involved in it? You know, we, I'm thinking right away of the work that's been done by Wide Open Walls on the mural festival they have in Sacramento. And we were approached a couple of years ago, and, and how can we participate? And, you know, it was a nice walk and talk for me and, and the organizer of it, and I think Katie Jacobson got involved for a short time. It's not, we didn't have anybody full-time to say, how do we, how do we put this into our portfolio of things we curate? And there's probably many other things we do. And then the other part that my friend and planning commissioner and bandmate, Dani Sandoval, would tell me to, don't forget music is part of art. And I think there's other, you know, art, music-related things we do that need to be incorporated about that. So again, you contemplated that on page 101, I think, and what's the private, public-private partnerships and collaborations. I think, think about that too, in terms of who that person is or what that, what a team of people will need to do. I think it's in their portfolio of work, but this is really good stuff and lots to chew on, I'm not going to get into. You guys are going to think more about the selection process. I'm probably more bound to not artists being a part of it, maybe a mix of artists and, and district representatives. But again, I'll let you kind of contemplate that a little further, but this is really good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandin.
Yeah, thank you for the thoughtful approach to this. Not that I was thinking you wouldn't be. I mean, I, I was expecting this level of work, and I, I really appreciate this in terms of kind of what we need to contemplate policy-wise, but also tactically, I think, blending both of those and bringing it forward. You know, I just, I mentioned that I just was on a study mission in Indianapolis, and it's, it's interesting that how much art can affect your kind of how you judge or you, or interpret things. They have a cultural trail there that they built to connect neighborhoods, and there's some educational pieces about scientists over time that brings you to this canal, that then there was this play area that the Colts had built that was the most creative play structure and interactive structure I had, I had experienced. And I even got in on the slide in the swing, because you just wanted to, you wanted to experience that. And then to go to this bridge that been, had been repurposed. I know that's not part of this project, but to actually see installations from really temporary artists that were local, that were only going to be up for a couple of years. It's just all these elements to actually kind of have just experienced that. I can see this coming to life, and it's really exciting to, to imagine that here because you just, you start to, you just want to be in these spaces. You want to explore. You, you love the place even more than you, you might have, and that's what I'm hoping for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Really exciting.
No, I, I agree with my colleagues. I had the opportunity to go to the reveal of the Jeff Nor project, the poetry over on E Street. And I actually didn't realize that Jeff Nor was the artist at the time. He's actually somebody I've known for quite a long time. But just being a part of that experience and seeing the pride in the face of a local artist who was recognized for his work and having that, you know, implanted on, on a simple sidewalk in our city. But, you know, the, the experience of that and having the opportunity for not only Jeff and his family to go back and, and see that contribution, but also people in our community who get a chance to take a walk with their kids and make that an experience as they walk along those sidewalks and look for the next, you know, clue that goes along with the poem. The part that stuck out to me is the, the artist selection and proposal review criteria. And, because, yeah, I'm not an expert either. I don't know if any of us claim to be, but I mean, there, there's so many different criteria, which, you know, that all seem equally as important. And, you know, aesthetics is, I mean, the first thing that comes to mind, like what's it look like? Is it cool? Is it something that makes me proud to look at? But I appreciated that there was a, a lot of emphasis on preserving the city's history. I mean, it doesn't take an, an expert to know, because within five minutes, you'll learn that a West Sacramentoan is very proud to be a West Sacramentoan. We have a young life as an incorporated city, but there's a long, rich history of people living in the city after, you know, several generations, and that pride needs to be reflected in the artwork as, as, you know, so we can communicate to everybody who we are. And, you know, I like the, the criteria about local artists as well, as has been said before. This is an opportunity for folks to come out and really show who we are. And I mean, ultimately, all these criteria working together, you know, you might have three of the five, your top five and have to make a decision to cut two away if some, there's not a local artist, but the piece is right and the price is right. Because that's another thing. As an attorney, you know, I look at some of them and I think, you know, I am, I'm also a mother of a very active seven-year-old, now seven-year-old. And I think about some things that he, I mean...
Any other comment or question or feedback? I will entertain a motion at this juncture.
I'll move the recommended action.
I have removed the recommended action by Councilmember LaDesma and a second by Councilmember Sandin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, actually, we have a...
Good evening, Mayor Vertem and council members. An item that is not on the calendar in your packet, but that's coming up this weekend on September 21st at 9:00 a.m. is the Delta Waterway cleanup. That's over in the Bridge District by the barn. And also one correction on the calendar, the LAFCO meeting will be held in Woodland, not at the council chambers.
And I believe it's canceled actually, this September 1st.
Then an additional update, canceled as well. Thank you.
City manager report? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Guerrero.
On the cleanup, do you, did you have to register in advance to participate?
Good question. I believe there is registration. We have had the information on the city's website. And I think it's also been posted on social media. City social media.
Thank you. City manager report.
Just wanted to announce, because it wasn't talked about tonight, you probably followed last night, the River Cats just won their third AAA championship, four and a half member Columbus. Lot of questions about a parade or some other celebration. I'll just say that I did reach out to Jeff Savage to offer our congratulations and said if they were interested in, you know, throwing a party, we'd be interested in attending. So, but I think it's, it's a great accomplishment, obviously, for our hometown team, so I just wanted to acknowledge them.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney report? All right. And staff direction from city council members? Seeing none, moving on to future agenda, item request by council. And if there's nothing further, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Guerrero, excuse me, LaDesma, and seconded by Councilmember Sandin. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Council, meeting adjourned.